All right, we're gonna go ahead. We have a lot to discuss tonight. And so in order to get through all of that, we're gonna go ahead and get started with our work session. Roll call.
Okay, had to find the right button. Benson?
Here.
Brunick?
Here.
Johnson?
Present.
Mybaum?
Present.
Minor?
Here.
Schramm?
Here.
Weber?
Here.
Villanueva?
Present.
Mayor Moser?
Here.
City Manager Leon?
Here.
All right, now is the time and place for public appearances that have nothing to do with what's on the agenda tonight. All right, so we're gonna move along. As I just stated, we actually have a lot to get through tonight. And so I'm gonna ask for the commission's indulgence to please get out a piece of paper, write questions that you have during the presentation. Trust me, there's like eighty slides? Ninety? We are gonna go through some of them really flat, fast. We only have an hour and a half to get through the presentation and to have discussion. So I'm gonna ask you to write your questions down on a piece of paper. We can easily go back to anywhere in the presentation that you would like as it relates to that question. But if we open it up and start asking questions during the presentation, we will not get through it all. That's gonna be very important for us to have all the information at our fingertips as we prepare for the public meeting in December that we get through this. So if you guys could please jot your questions down and ask them at the end. Kyle's happy to answer all of them. I will also let you know that with a very busy agenda tonight, I'm not sure we'll have time for any public questions. But know that there will not be a decision made tonight. This is a work session for us to get the information, to be able to go out and talk to folks about this very subject. And we will have time for public comment if not tonight at our meeting in December. So I wanted to get through those things. So with that, City Manager Leon, I'll turn it over to you for a few comments and then over to Kyle.
Thank you, Mayor, Honorable Mayor, members of the commission. Kyle Goodmanson, of course, here, and he's back with another big project for us to talk about. And Tanner Hanson is our superintendent at the wastewater plants also here, along with Delron Peters from HDR to help us understand all the technical questions and aspects of this project. This is something that we had hoped we would be discussing for a number of years. But then COVID came along and changed a lot and changed the opportunity we might have for funding said projects. So while we knew we were needing to go down this road, in some regard, we didn't know how fast we were gonna go. But we're gonna go fast. So we're gonna do our best to get you as much information in a short amount of time as we can and help guide you towards making the best decisions for the community. So with that, I'll let Kyle start this very informative presentation.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Commission. Happy to be here tonight. Like Amy said, this is kinda with some of the funding opportunities that are out there that we haven't really seen in our industry before. We've got some decisions to make, maybe a little tighter timeline than we'd like. But I think we have information to make good decisions. So kind of what does the future hold? What we're kind of realizing with the funding and the issues we had at the facility, the future is kind of now. So it's kind of time to start making some decisions. Next slide. We're gonna talk just real briefly. So we're gonna go through some of these treatment slides really quick. You've seen them before, just kind of a refresher. Pretreatment, that's our screening, grit removal and odor control at the beginning of the process. And then we go into primary treatment where we do some flow measurement. And this is where we really settle out, the last of the solids that will settle out. As we go into secondary treatment, the biological treatment, this is where we're trying to remove those dissolved instead of suspended solids that wouldn't settle out in primary treatment. We go into disinfection as the final step in the effluent stage. We have solids handling and dewatering as part of the process when we remove the solids and those solids go out to our sludge lagoons where they are land applied. Again, that first step, grit screening, grit removal, again, we're gonna kind of just skip through these next. Primary clarification, again, just removing those, the last of those solids that will settle out. Aeration treatment, again, this is where we, one thing we'll point out here is this is the first part of the plant where we actually have to pump and everything's gravity flow up to this point. Getting this where we do our biological treatment where the bugs kind of consume those dissolved solids and get them into a deactivated sludge or that'll settle out for us in the next phase. And that's our secondary clarifier, again, removing those solids that'll settle out in the biological process. UV disinfection, this is, our UV system was again in 2000. It was kind of newer technology at that time, so there's definitely some issues here we're looking at addressing. Solids dewatering, that's that stage of getting our solids removal. Digestors where we break those solids down, reduce the solids before they go out to lagoons. And then again, we land apply the solids per our bio solids application program. Again, went through those really fast, they're kind of a refresher. Why we do what we do, first and foremost, it's to protect public health and to protect the environment. Everything we can do is kind of driven by the Clean Water Act of 1972. That's kind of our MPDS, our National Pollution Discharge Elimination System. That's our permit and that's where we get our regulations and limits that we have to meet at the facility. Kind of the history of the facility. Originally, primary treatment was installed in 1964. We had some major upgrades in seventy-four and the early eighties. Eighty-two is when they added the secondary treatment. Then we had major improvements in that ninety-nine to two thousand and three. So you can kind of see that twenty-year window that we're getting in terms of equipment and in terms of need for some rehabilitation at the facility. This side that I have up here now is from the two thousand project. The reason I have this up there, if you see the areas that are shaded, those were new structures in that two thousand project. So you can see the light pinks, first one up there in the kind of the upper left, that's the odor control. And then the blue ones, we have the gravity belt thickener building. Over in the bottom right is our aeration basins, and we also had addition to the lab. And we had our UV building. So those were all new structures in two thousand that are only twenty years old. Yeah, I put this slide here and just kind of point out, all the colored lines are underground infrastructure that's around the facility, different sludge lines, effluent lines, gas lines, water mains. So there's a lot of underground infrastructure that we really can't see. So there is always that potential to find some unknowns as you go into these projects. Now we kind of get into where we started to see the plant failures that we've had. It really started in two thousand and eleven. We had a primary effluent sinkhole. That's kind of our famous sinkhole that's up in front of the aeration building. It's been there forever now, it seems like. We also had the outfall pipe collapse during that project or during that phase, during those events. These were pipelines that weren't replaced in two thousand and eleven, so again, our two thousand project. So they're older infrastructure. The pipe you see in the picture is a HDP, a high-density polyurethane pipe. It has some advantages over what we have there, the concrete pipes, because it's got a little more flex. So that's something we'll look at in the future. Two thousand and eighteen is really, really where we started to see some really wet conditions and started to have a lot of issues at the plant. The primary clarifier effluent pipe sinkhole showed up again back in two thousand when we dug that up and exposed it. The contractor kind of looked at it, it was its arched concrete pipe. We basically just caulked the holes in the pipe and covered it back up because the contractor, Tom, didn't really want to tackle the project. It held till two thousand and eighteen when we had a high water table again. And we found there were some additional holes in the pipe farther down. If we get into that, those wet conditions and the water table comes up, if you have any type of hole in that pipe, water runs in the pipe and just takes the sand and material right with it and we end up with a sinkhole. We also started to have some pipe failures and things in our digester building. Kind of one of my favorite pictures to see Matt, this picture of defeat there. We had a pipe blow apart in the digester building, one of our sludge lines. And as you can see, the floor is covered in sludge. It was a diaphragm pump, so every time it surged, spraying material up all the way up to the ceiling, all over some of our electrical panels and things like that in the facility. Secondary arm clarifier, here's another one. We're kind of in a bind a little bit with our secondary clarifier. We can't take it out of service, very easy. It's difficult to take out of service and we don't have a lot of redundancy in this process. So they actually made the repair to the clarifier arm with a kayak. They did have a life jacket on. I still don't think that makes it quite OSHA approved, but we had plenty of staff there. But this repair actually failed here, what, three weeks ago? So we're back in the same boat again. Next slide. Then it kind of hit the March twenty nineteen flood. Again, emergency discharge of about two and a half million gallons that we couldn't treat, that we bypassed to the river. We also had some sanitary overflows out in the system, another five MGD that never even got to the facility. Next slide. Again, we were overloaded with solids, we had to take down everything in the plant, pump out the solids. Our sinkhole expanded during that time period, so we had additional issues with that. And kind of what came out of that was we knew there was gonna be some potential for federal funding. We came in and we decided to do a condition assessment and get that process started to get ourselves in a position to apply for those funds. Again, the potential EDA and mitigation funds were the main ones we were looking at in twenty nineteen when we started that. Again, when we go into that condition assessment, again, we recommended in twenty nineteen, you guys approved us to go ahead and move forward with that. We looked at architectural, electrical, mechanical instrumentation, structural process. So we really looked at every discipline of engineering and other facility. We looked at our maintenance records that we had for the facility. We did existing facility inspections and we came up with some with technical memorandums that really pointed out some of the areas that we needed to have improvements in our equipment. Also after that, we moved into the master planning at the wastewater facility. Again, the last condition assessment and master plan occurred in nineteen ninety-five, prior to the two thousand project. So it's been a while since we really did an in-depth look at what we had at the facility. Out of that, we did get approved for an EDA grant. Kind of where we sit right now, the state has approved the plans for the EDA project. The final set of plans is at EDA for review. EDA has had some staff turnover on their end. I think they have some staff shortages, so we haven't got those plans back for final review from EDA. We really want to get those bid out early in twenty twenty-two. A little bit of what we do in the future with our ARPA funds really will kind of drive how much of this project we do. So we really want to get that decision made so we know what to do with our EDA funds. One of the reasons we really want to get that out to construction is with the amount of funds available out there in our industry, contractors are gonna be an issue moving into the future. So we'd like to get that bid out and get going before the ARPA funds, you know, hit the industry. So again, that was a $6.4 million grant, it was about a $9 million project total. Just given most of the project location was at the facility itself. Next one. We do have a little bit of that EDA project that's out in the collection system out by our Parker Hanafin. The EDA project was really driven by looking for resiliency to natural disasters. So it was minimizing risk from natural disasters. So we really had to pick projects within our facility that met those, that criteria. We couldn't just pick and choose everything we wanted to do. It had to beat that criteria for the EDA grant, which was, they've got some pretty stringent rules on meeting those criteria. So we had to look at system weakness and need for facility strengthening, service failures and need for essential capacity building, economic vulnerability. Again, we're tying it back to Economic Development Administration. And then we had to look for some operational shortcomings and need for some analysis and planning. So we had some planning documentation that was also in there. Kind of the list of the projects came out there, reduced electrical main gear. You see a lot of things reducing or electrical-wise. And then we had some extra pumping and some things like that. Again, these projects had to meet that criteria, so. Some considerations for the EDA project, some of the things we're seeing is we had to turn in a preliminary engineering report as part of that application. It's kind of similar to what we have to do with the facilities plan for the SRF. Cost overages are the responsibilities of the city. And everything that was in that preliminary engineering report, we have to complete. EDA has voiced some concerns about the cost of inflation for when we put this bid package together for the application. So they advise us for some options. And one of the things we really came up with is really to put all the money into the construction phase of it and use our own money on the GIS modeling and master plan. And part of that reason was is they considered that professional services was gonna be really difficult to put that scope together for a bid. So right now, again, we're waiting for the plans to come back and hopefully get that bid out here early spring, so. Project schedule for the EDA, this was the original project schedule. As you can see, we're hoping to be bid letting in July of this year and we haven't. So we're a little behind on that. COVID didn't help any of the situations, but right now we blame everything on COVID if we're behind on the timeline, so. Again, we're gonna try to get that out. We do have that twenty twenty-three deadline, just like you'll see with the ARPA funds. There's deadlines on when we have to have construction done. So it will be kind of important to get this process and project out to bid and construction started. And then COVID hit, like I said, a lot of issues came out of that. But the biggest thing that came out of COVID was the American Rescue Plan Act. We received a letter in late August, basically the first of September, from the Department of Agriculture and National Resources requesting state water plan applications. The deadline was October first for that. So we really only got about a month's notice to put these applications together. That wasn't a lot of time. Luckily, we had to put together a lot of work on the master plan and the condition assessment, the waste, condition assessment to wastewater facility. So HDR did have a lot of that information put together. So from that, we just kind of morphed from that master plan into putting together the facilities plan. We, we'll go back one. We did have, DA and R was at our annual conference in September and was a presenter. So they talked about the ARPA funds. Their last slide was think big, but not too big. That's really the direction we've gotten. So we're really limited on direction right now. Again, the state received about nine hundred and seventy-four point five million in ARPA funds. How much of that will go to water and wastewater? That's an unknown. And of that amount that goes to water and wastewater, how much is gonna go to Danner for the environmental funding programs that are in place is an unknown. So again, there's just a lot of unknowns about the money that's out there. But what we do know, that nine hundred and seventy-four point five million, that's funding that we haven't seen in our industry probably since the seventies and maybe didn't even see it in the seventies. So big thing about the ARPA funds is they have to be spent by December of twenty twenty-six. We've asked the question, can we front load contracts, spend the ARPA funds first if we get, you know, twenty, thirty percent grant and use the resulting SRF loan second? In the past, they have not done that and they really haven't given us an answer on that. So as of right now, I think we're in that window. We gotta have the projects completed by twenty twenty-six, December of twenty twenty-six. That could change, but that's where we're thinking right now. So we turned in our state water plan by October first. The first phase of that was the wastewater treatment plant, it's basically what we're talking about tonight. The original water plant actually had numbers a little bit higher than this, that ninety million versus forty-four million. And actually, we're down to about eighty-eight million on the new facility, add a new location, or forty-four million for retrofit, rehabilitating our current facility. We did also put in a water distribution project for an additional eight point two million. On the water distribution project, we basically took every water main project that we had in our CIP and turned that in. We did a over a million dollar project on water meters to update our water meter system, new meters and to switch to a radio read system versus guys having to go out, fixed base towers to read meters. And we also have a, I think, almost a million dollars in there for rehab of our water towers. That price included basically sandblasting and painting the entire tower inside and out. We're gonna do an inspection on that, hopefully we can bring that number down a little bit and just have to do the inside. But again, we put enough in there to cover that. We also did a wastewater collection project. This was several projects in town where we had sewer issues. One was like the crossing of the sewer vein, that Maran Creek there by the chamber where the pipe is, the supports are supposed to be holding the pipe up, the pipe's holding the supports up now after the flood. So we put it, we did put in some projects for like the Thrive property east of town to where we're gonna have difficulty soaring them with our existing system to get some sewer service in those areas. So we've got about seven point two million. We had a little bit of lift station work at our lift station out there by Parker Hanafin. So we also have that on top of. So as we talked about the rate numbers tonight, I have not figured in the eight point two or the seven point two. I have just figured in the numbers for what it's gonna cost for the treatment project itself. So we're a little bit farther behind on getting our facility plan put together for those two projects. Right now, we've really been concentrating on getting this bigger one in. I'm confident we can still get everything done in time to get funding on those two other projects, but we're just not quite there yet. So tonight, we're really concentrating on the treatment plant itself. State water plan, the state received roughly, I think it was over two hundred and fifty projects and roughly three point two billion dollars worth of projects. How many of those projects, how much of that three point two billion is gonna come in on the January first deadline to apply for SRF funding and I think the ARPA funds do, is another unknown. So again, there's just a lot of unknowns. Again, there's ninety-seven, nine hundred and seventy-four point five million. You take seventeen and a half percent of three point two billion, they would have to get about five hundred and sixty million of that nine hundred and seventy-four million to get about a seventeen and a half percent grant. So those are just some rough numbers. Again, we don't know if that three point two billion is gonna be three billion or two billion. We don't know how much of that nine hundred and seventy-four point five million is gonna go to environmental funding. So again, just a lot of unknowns yet on what those final numbers will be. So when we looked at the wastewater treatment, master planning and facilities plan, again, we were working on a master plan and it kind of morphed into the facilities plan. The facilities plan kind of overlaps, it's a lot of the same information. But when you get into facilities plan, that's checking all the boxes we need for our funding application. So that's what HDR has been working on for us. We, really, there's three options that you look at and that we looked at. Rehab of the existing facility that we talked about, a new plant at alternative locations, and then of course, the do-nothing option. Again, we're, this timeline is pushed up a lot because of the funding, but also the reality of it is, is the do-nothing option is not sustainable very soon. If we look at the breakdowns and the issues we've had of equipment, we look at that twenty-year window that we're in, it's just, it's time to start replacing equipment at the facility. We do have some current wastewater debt out there. I'm not sure those numbers are exactly right. We also have the additional SRF that we just applied for here last year. I think that was four point five million. So we do have some additional debt that's still out there. Just a real quick here, a little graphic, the wastewater plant facility, kind of down there where it's at, takes up about five point four acres. The wastewater lagoon is about seven and a half acres. One of the things I do want to remind you of is there's about three major gas lines that go through this major oil, gas pipelines. There's one in front of the facility that goes down the road. And there's two, if you could kind of see where Maran Creek and the paddle, or in our collector well is, on paddle well point. There's two more gas lines across the river and come across right there. One of those is the Trans Canada Pipeline. Trans Canada is pretty strict on what you can do over top of their easement. So it's really gonna limit what you can do on paddle well point. Rehabilitation of the existing facility. Again, we estimate about a $44 million project. We will have the facilities plan out to you guys before that December thirteenth meeting. If you want to look more at the nuts and bolts of what the project is. But it's really building off some of, again, some of that work that was completed in two thousand. What we're looking at, that forty-four million is not a lot of brick and mortar construction. We do have probably a primary clarifier in there that was kind of a bottleneck and causing us some issues, which will be brick and mortar construction. We have some on the grit chambers that were undersized that will be adding a little bit of capacity with our grit chambers and new grit chambers. And we've had some code issues with where our boilers are at in the digester. We'd have to do a small addition to our digester building for boilers. But otherwise, it's really equipment replacement. So we'll be building off a lot of those structures that were put in two thousand. Again, if you walk away from the facility right now, you're walking away from quite a few structures that were built in two thousand that are only twenty years old. Again, we'd also be building off a lot of the work that was completed as part of the EDA project. You know, we picked projects for that EDA project with, there were things that were aging infrastructure and things we needed to address that also fit the criteria for that, that program. Kind of the negative side of rehabilitation, retrofit, so there's always a little, a few more unknowns. There's gonna be a little, a few more change orders in a retrofit, rehabilitation of a facility. An example would be the clarifier arm is one of those areas too where you get into, really, it's the end of the clarifier arm that's been the issue. So do you go in, cut that off, try to weld a new one on? When you're in there doing that, you better sandblast and make sure the rest of the structure is good. By the time you sandblast, recoat it, now the amount of money you got into it, to a piece of equipment that's twenty years old, doesn't make sense. So you end up, you're at the point of it's time for replacement. So you have a lot of, a lot of times where it's hard to know where to start and stop when you get into retrofit projects. There's always gonna be things when you're done that you wish you would have done. You're gonna find some things that, once you get in the project, you didn't think you were gonna be doing, but you'll have to. We think we've done a really good job on our condition assessment. We think we've looked at all the tanks. We've got a pretty good grasp on our, like I said, our concrete structures are solid. I did throw in, there always is an increased risk for compliance issues during a retrofit because you're bypassing, you're shutting things down. Our state, our Danner is very easy to work with, but when you do have a compliance issue, they do send us a nasty letter that goes to the mayor, so I thought I better give a heads up. When you look at forty-four million, that's roughly a sixty-seven point six percent increase on rates for a twenty-year loan. When you do equipment replacement, you have to do a twenty-year loan, you can't do thirty. When you look at our rates for an average user, for about five thousand five hundred gallons is about forty-eight dollars and sixty-two cents. You increase that by that sixty-seven percent, you increase it by about thirty-three dollars a month for a file of eighty-one ninety-four. Again, that's with no grant, but that's a, that's a big number. Next slide. When we looked at the new treatment plan at a new location, we came up with an estimated cost of eighty-eight million. Again, that's one of the things you gotta remember is we have to have a lift station at our current facility. We have to pump it to the new location. You've got three to five miles of force being to get it to the new plant. You have a new plant at a new, new location, purchase of property. And then you also have to get that line discharged back to the Missouri River. So there's some funding issues with that. Can we borrow that amount? We can. As a, as a utility, do we want to go that far in debt? I'm cautious about that. We have a lot of known projects coming up in the future of wastewater. We've never replaced any of our clay tile. At some point, as we move into the future, when we do street projects, not only are we gonna have to replace with water main, but we're gonna need to start replacing clay tile, brick manholes and things like that. And you know, you're talking a twenty, twenty-five-year window, there's projects out there in the wastewater in that timeframe that I haven't even thought about yet. So that amount of debt makes me nervous. The other thing that really came out of this is conversations that I've had with Andy Brules and Mark Perkovich at Danner. We most likely will not get grant money for the additional cost of relocation. That's not guaranteed one way or the other, but my conversations with him, he says we will most likely be disappointed. So there's that side of it. Now again, again, when you Now, again, again, when you look at spinning the ARPA funds by December of twenty twenty-six, that's going to be really tough with a relocation at this time. Location is going to be one of the biggest issues. When you look at a location, you know, it has to be accessible to staff during all weather conditions. We can't just go build this down in the boonies. We don't, I say we, Tanner and his staff don't get called out on, you know, sunny seventy-degree days. They get called out in floods, they get called out in snowstorms, ice storms, thunderstorms. So, the facility's got to be something that we can access. Discharge to the Missouri River. When we talk about that, that permit and our limits, it's based on the size of the receiving stream. So, we really do not want to discharge to the Jim River, we want to stay discharging to the Missouri River. One of the issues with that is, we also want to make sure we're discharging in South Dakota. When you start getting east of town and looking at where the border from South Dakota and Nebraska is, it actually follows the old riverbed. So, a lot of those places where may want to discharge would actually have to be crossing Nebraska. When you cross Nebraska, you also cross into a separate, different EPA region. So, permitting wise, it's just not something we're really excited about doing. So, we want to stay, stay in South Dakota. Another thing we looked at is flood plain, there's a lot of flood plain issues out there when you get into that east of town. Also want to be a good neighbor, there's a lot of homes, businesses east of town that we don't want to be building right next to probably. So, that makes that area difficult to acquire land and easements. So, that kind of gets us, can we find a seller? If we can't find a seller, are we willing to do the imminent, imminent obane and condemnation? And is that even an option for sure to move that far out of town when we have an alternative in town? So, again, a lot of questions there we'd have to look into too. And again, when you look at the timeframe of what land acquisition will take, we start to get really nervous about that twenty twenty-six timeline. And part of that facilities plan is, we will have to put a timeline in there as part of the application. And DNR is going to make sure that we have to have a legitimate timeline in there. Again, does eighty-eight million dollars prevent us from doing future projects? That's a concern. For eighty-eight million dollars in debt for the next twenty and thirty years, does that limit our ability to do future projects? Looking at that, again, when we looked at a thirty-year loan, I'll have to talk more about this as we move forward, but it's roughly a hundred percent increase. You're going to take a user, our average user, forty-eight dollars a month, and they're going to go to ninety-seven dollars a month. So, it's a significant increase. On that same token, when we look at that year or those twenty and thirty-year loans, I don't know if we have a choice, but I believe that the state of South Dakota will make us take out a portion of that in a twenty-year loan, and staff would also recommend that. Likely, we would have to break out that eighty-eight million dollar project into what percentage is equipment and what percentage is brick and mortar, concrete, concrete construction. And on the equipment side, we'll have to do twenty-year loan on that. And again, they don't want us taking out a thirty-year loan on equipment and having it fail at twenty years. So, again, those are the rules through, through SRF and through our Danner environmental funding programs. So, as staff, we would also recommend that. I think we would probably be forced into that anyway through that. So, again, we're back to that, can we meet that twenty twenty-six deadline? Are we potentially putting ourselves in a position where we don't get any of the ARPA funds? And again, when you look at rates and what's that going to do, it's going to require some extra support from the public. So, this slide here, we kind of put some numbers together. When you look at the wastewater treatment rehabilitation on the, on the left, again, that, you're looking at that forty-eight dollars and sixty-two cents for that five thousand five hundred gallon user. Again, with no grant, you're looking at that thirty-three dollars. If you look at twenty percent grant, thirty percent grant, you can see those numbers that get all the way down to twenty-three dollars increase if we get thirty percent grant. We're hearing numbers anyway from twenty to thirty percent right now. A week ago, I wouldn't have thought it was going to be that high, but that's kind of the information we're getting back. I'm confident we'll be at least twenty percent. I'm really hoping we're going to be closer to that thirty percent in grant. I just used kind of that seven hundred and fifty dollar bill would kind of be a, a normal wastewater usage for some of our larger businesses, not industries, but some of our, more of our hometown, some of our restaurants, some of our local businesses and things. So, if you have a seven hundred and fifty dollar sewer bill, we get a twenty percent grant, you're going to increase by about four hundred and five dollars. So, their bill is going to go from seven hundred and fifty dollars to one thousand one hundred and fifty. So, again, that's a pretty big chunk of change that some of our local residents are going to get at home, and then they're also going to get it at their business. When you look on the right side, this was the wastewater treatment plant, new location. When I looked at this loan, I did about forty percent of it at twenty years and about sixty percent of it at thirty years. Again, when I figured the grant, I only figured twenty percent of the original forty-four based on the information I'm getting back from the state. That's not guaranteed, maybe we could get thirty percent grant for the entire eighty-eight million, but that's not the information we're getting right now. So, if you look at those numbers, again, if we get that thirty percent grant, you're looking at an increase of about forty-seven dollars up to about ninety-six dollars for your average, your average home. So, it's a, again, you're doubling, doubling the rates. Again, seven hundred and fifty dollar user is going to go up to fifteen hundred. We have some industries in town that get seventy thousand to a hundred thousand dollar bills a month on wastewater, and those are going to double for the relocation. And it's a significant increase even at the rehabilitation. That's a, that's a big number to, to sell. Facilities plan, SRF application, the application deadline is January first. Some of the discussion we're getting, going into the application period, not having a clear-cut answer, potentially does put us, limit our ability to get the grant. Not saying we can't still get it, but not having a clear direction on what we're doing coming January first, kind of makes the staff at DA and R question if we're really going to be able to get our project up and going by, and completed by twenty twenty-six. December thirteenth, we will have a public hearing on the wastewater treatment plant facilities plan for you guys to approve. Again, it'll be a public hearing. So, that will be the time for, for public comment on our facilities plan, on these numbers, you know, and rates that we're looking at. That meeting, we'll also have a memorandum for the city manager to sign, the SRF application documents. We most likely will have, have in that memo to sign the, the application for the other two smaller SRF applications. But we will also have to do a facilities plan for those two and have a public hearing on them, but that will probably be after the first of the year. So, again, we're really concentrating on getting this, this bigger one in on time and making sure we're getting all of our i's dotted and t's crossed for the state. Funding would most likely be approved in March. Right now, we have that, I would say, a final draft of the, the facilities plan back from HDR. Staff's going to do a final review of it here, probably this week and beginning of next week. And again, we'll get that out to you before that December thirteenth meeting. Again, a timeline, state revolving fund application, we're going to get that in January first. We'll do a request for qualifications to select a consultant. As part of this, anytime there's federal funds, you want to make sure you go through that process. And we, we have some firms out there that are interested in the work. Funding again awarded in March of twenty twenty-two. April of twenty twenty-two, it'd be nice to get those. Again, once we do this, we have to establish those rates to fund the project. So, the very latest, we probably want to be doing our rates in April, sooner the better on that. Again, we want to get that EDA project out and into construction before these ARPA funds really start hitting the, the market and getting a contractor onboard. We'll start design in April or May of twenty twenty-two. Final contract documents and construction, construction awards in twenty twenty-three. It's a nine-month to a year design on a project this size. So, again, looking at getting the construction started in late twenty twenty-three, again, we've got to have everything completed by twenty twenty-six. So, it's a time, timeline's tight, even if everything goes perfect. Any questions? That's kind of what I've got for you. I know there's a lot of information. The timeline's quicker than what we all wanted, I understand that. But it's a, like I said, the funding's out there and there's, you know, potentially funding that we haven't seen before. So, we're doing what we can, as timely as we can.
All right. I know that was a lot of information, and I teased it wasn't eighty slides. But see, now that it's done sooner, you're all happy, right? So, set the expectations there and then set it up for you.
Yeah.
It looked even better. He probably cut forty over the weekend, so...
We did cut a few, and like I said, I went, I didn't, you guys didn't need to see the treatment process again.
Yeah.
You guys have all been to the facility, you've seen that before. I wasn't trying to hide anything, it was just, I really wanted to give you guys as much time for discussions and questions and...
I'll start it off, Kyle, and then I'll shut my microphone off and allow, I saw quite a few folks taking notes, so I think you're going to have quite a few questions. So, the EDA projects that have been approved, those get done no matter what? Is that, would that be correct? No matter what's decided in December, we move forward with the projects that we have approved through the EDA grant funding? Or does that then get waylaid and put to the side depending on what's decided in December?
I think there is some projects within that EDA project that, if we did decide to relocate, that we would probably have to sit down with the EDA and address some of those that probably we would not do. There's, I would say probably over half of them we would still do, but there is like an equalization basin. You know, if we know we're moving, we're not going to do an equalization basin. So, so some of those projects, we would have to sit down with, with EDA and figure out how, how we give that money back. So...
All right. I'll let you, Mason, you're going to start?
Sure. So, with the rehab option, Kyle, would, what would be your estimated timeline of how long that facility would remain viable using a rehabilitation option versus new construction?
So, when you, when you look at it, rehabilitation, rehabilitation at, at the facility, or even a new facility, you're about twenty years, twenty to twenty-five years on equipment. It's a, it's a harsh environment, it just doesn't land or hold up very well. So, on the equipment side, you're twenty years, and that's why SRF has that twenty-year limit on, on the loan time. As you get into the structures, of course, at a new facility, those structures are going to be new. At our existing facility, we have structures that are from nineteen sixty-four. Again, we've done our due diligence and we've addressed, or not should have addressed, but we've, we've looked at those, HDR has done their, what do you call it? Assessment, condition assessment on those. And we're, we're confident there's a minimum of twenty-five years left in those structures. Again, there's always that potential that we miss something, but I'm confident there's at least twenty-five years in all those structures, and most of them will have, have more than that. You know, like I said, the ones that are only twenty years old, you know, the concrete's good for probably another fifty years.
So, just to reiterate, rehab option would be about twenty years for the, the equipment and twenty-five years, give or take for the structures. And the new option would be twenty years for equipment and who knows how long for the structures?
All right.
Okay.
I've got a question regarding, regarding the ground at, at the facility. I mean, that's a big thing. We all see the holes. If you've, I was out there a couple of weeks ago. You guys were nice enough to show me the, show me the facility, which was really interesting. It just, it is, it's, it's an interesting tour to, to do. But there's numerous areas where the ground is, has sunk. There's, there's other places in that area that, that have that issue. From HDR's perspective, you know, I, I would like to hear the assessment on that and thoughts of, you know, how much of an issue or how little of an issue or it, it scares me.
I'm going to...
Go ahead.
I'll start, and Delron can jump in when I'm wrong or if I say something's a lie. We did a structural analysis of all the, the buildings, tanks and structures. Again, all that came back good, solid. When you look at the sinkholes and things like that, a lot of that came from high-water table and holes in piping and things like that where the material had somewhere to go. So, based on the condition assessment, I think, again, our structures are solid, the footings for the structures are solid. The sinkholes and, and things we have really came from issues with the piping, and those are some of the things that we're replacing partially in the EDA project and further in, in the rehabilitation. So, I'm confident, again, that we have a solid twenty-five years minimum, if not longer, especially on, on the structure that we would be putting in. Did I say that? You agree with that? Okay.
No, I think that's, that's good. The, the, when we did the geotechnical borings out at the site, everything below the structures was below the...
Delron, you got to go. Sorry about that.
Yeah. I forgot about that.
Yeah, so, we did geotechnical borings out at the site to test how it was standing up below the pipe, and it was really good materials below the piping and below the structures. Like Kyle said, just to reiterate, a lot of that happened when the high flows came, it was, the pipes were damaged at the top and it was sucking those soils down into the tops of the pipes because of the corrosion that occurred into the piping. So, we were concerned initially that it was happening under the pipe, but it's not. So...
Does that answer your question?
Is there, so the, the Thrive Building, the visitors' center, in behind there, issues, issues there? Are there, is it similar issues? Is it something completely else? I, I'm just...
He's referring to the chamber building across the...
Yeah, I wasn't involved in that.
So, it is similar. I mean, they're, they're on soils, but I think what has been done in our prior construction and with the footings and, and the soils that are under the footings, that we won't have that, that issue. And again, through our structural analysis at HDR, I've seen, we haven't seen any movement of the structures. It was movement of the surface and the movement of some of the pipes, if that makes sense. So, again, we're confident with our footings and with the structures and, and how they've basically not moved.
Kyle, another follow-up question to the, my earlier one, would, how would you break down on a new construction, what percent of that eighty-eight million would be for the physical structures and what percent would be for the equipment?
So, when I broke that out in that slide, if you want to go to the next slide, Kristen. So, again, if, if you look at this slide on the right, when I broke out those numbers, again, it's thirty percent grant of the forty-four million, and then I split it up, forty percent equipment on a twenty-year loan, sixty percent in brick and mortar construction. And it might be closer to fifty-fifty, but for now, that was, again, not all these numbers are perfect, but they're, they're getting you in the, the direction of understanding where we're at.
Kyle, the, it sounds like a lot of those issues with the ground were, like you said, were because of the pipe moving and, and was mainly because they were concrete, correct? They're just old and they're concrete and they're, they're inflexible?
Correct. So, what, what we had during that time period is, once the material started to move, then the pipe started to shift and it just compounded the issue. So, you have solid concrete pipes, as they start to buckle, they crack, they get holes in them, and when they get holes, that material goes in. Again, material's somewhere to go, and that's where you end up with the sinkholes.
So, the new, this project then, will that also including fixing a lot of those old pipes and infrastructures?
Yeah.
That you don't have that movement anymore out there?
Right. Like, part of our EDA project actually addresses the pipe going up the hill where our current sinkhole is. We also do some of the piping and the headworks to the facility, kind of that stretch of pipe in front of the, the street department as part of the EDH project, EDA project, and then further will address some of those piping issues as part of the, potentially the ARPA project.
Kyle, did you mention what the ceiling for borrowing is?
I'm going to, no, I did not mention that. I don't know if Al has that number right offhand.
I've got rough estimates from the end of twenty twenty. Currently, South Dakota allows you to borrow up to five percent, and they have an additional clause that lets you borrow, and that's five percent of the assessed value of the previous year. And they'll let you borrow an additional ten percent for utility projects. And utility projects are listed as water, wastewater and electrical. We don't have electrical, so we aren't borrowing anything there. At the end of twenty twenty, we had approximately twenty-eight million additional borrowing capacity under the five percent limit, and we had an additional sixty million plus under the ten percent. So, totaled, we could borrow up to eighty-eight million. That's a moving target because we pay... because we pay debt down each year and the assessed value goes up each year. For instance, between 19 and 20, the assessed value in Yankton went up almost 40 million at 10%. That allows you an additional 4 million that you can borrow in just one year. So again, it's, it's quite a moving target. If we borrowed it all today, we couldn't borrow it. But that would also take some discussion with the state on what they consider the 5% and 10%. Right now, when I list the 5% in our audit, I list all debt. Technically, two of our loans are leases. The state doesn't consider that debt, under my understanding. We've never challenged it because we still show it that way. And that would be the fire department opt-out and the new pool opt-out. Again, since those are considered leases, that would take some lawyer interpretations and discussions with the state. They may not even consider that debt. We still show it so that when the average person looks at our audit, they know what our total debt is. It's, it's about like Kyle's, there's a lot of moving targets and it would take some more clarification if we were really pushing to borrow up to 88 million. I'm sure we could figure it out, but it would take more discussion with the state too on interpreting our debts.
So that is ceiling capacity, which don't we already have a bunch, a chunk of that loan debt out for the water plant? So we couldn't even borrow the full 88 million?
No, the, the 48 is what is left in capacity as of the end of 2020. That's taking into account that we've already borrowed in, in the wastewater or in utilities, the extra 10% were outstanding in debt of almost 50-some million, 57 million, I believe it is, between the plant, a little bit of wastewater and the pump station slash wells. So that, that's above and beyond that. We have that 60 million extra above and beyond that in the 10% limit.
You might have to write that out for me, Al, so I can understand.
What I'll do tomorrow is I'll send you our, our 2020 debt li- limit that, that we use in our audits so that you all see and, and you'll be able to tell then, you know, it shows you the assessed value at the top, what the capacity is, what we have outstanding and then what is left in capacity to borrow according to my interpretation of the 5% and the 10%.
And Al, just a quick follow-up, what you're referring to that you are including, but may or may not actually need to be included, it does or does not fall under the sale and leaseback provisions?
Again, according to how our, how we've borrowed on those two outstanding ones, that being the fire station and the pool, those are considered lease options. So you don't even, on, on debt, we don't even show that as an amount due each year, other than the current year. And, and that would take some interpretation from the state to see if they agree with me that it's not really considered debt then. Again, I just show it because I want the average citizen to know how much we're in totally in debt. So we, we've never had to worry about it, whether it's debt or not. We certainly would clarify and, and follow up if we're talking about borrowing 88 million more.
The majority of my homework was spent specifically on that. It's like I've got two slides from a state presentation where I might argue that we're on the lease side. And so that'll be part of the future discussion for sure.
One of the things that keeps going through my mind is, you know, say we use the 44 million for the physical structures, the buildings on a new build and we don't do that. In 25 years, we have to do a new, new facility. With the way inflation's going, what is that 44 million going to cost us in 25 years? And that's, I mean, I, the, the value of $100 in 1950 is a lot, it's worth a lot less today than it was in 1950 with cause of inflation. So I'm just, or even 1980. So I'm, I'm just, that's something that's always going through my mind is what's that going to cost us in the future?
And Kyle, also you're not factoring in any potential economic growth inside of city limits when it comes to these rates that are up there?
No.
You know, if we add.
That's just strictly.
Couple hundred more customers, maybe another big manufacturing plant partner, whomever. So over the course of the couple of decades, this is just essentially all things currently.
This is current.
Staying the same.
So what businesses would this have the most impact on? Thinking HEDRO, Simples, anyone else?
Yeah, I mean, Simples would be at the top of that list, but I mean, it, you also see a lot of big users when you look at school district, hospital, there's, and then yeah, all of our industries are big, are big consumers of water, which are sewers based off water usage. So it, it'll be a.
Kyle, could you speak, when we spoke before, you talked about surcharge? So can, can you explain that? Just so I have a better understanding of it?
I'll start with, we didn't really get into the surcharges because there's so many unknowns, whether it's going to be 20% or 30%. And until we get a final number, I didn't want to try to calculate how much will go on surcharge. But I'll let Al kind of explain how the surcharge works. But yes, a percentage of it will have to go on surcharge.
And, and I'll start by referencing our, our current water rates, you know. When we changed our water rates approximately six years ago now, at that time, we had a base rate and a, and a consumption rate. That's how we have in sewer right now. When, when we went to borrow the 60-some million total for water, they required the coverage to be in a surcharge. That's what will happen with wastewater too. And again, I'm pretty sure that there's no interpretation differences there. They're going to say you need the surcharge. The surcharge has to be at 110% of debt service. So when we changed wastewater, we did away with the base, but didn't really do, didn't lessen anything. All we really did was rolled that in to part of our surcharge. And our surcharge from water right now for the average person is I believe it's $27.51 approximately. That was under $10 when we first started borrowing. That's what's going to happen in wastewater too. We don't have an analysis yet because we aren't even sure what we're borrowing yet, but we will be doing away with the base and it will become a surcharge. And that surcharge has to cover the total debt at 110%. So you may see less on consumption, but it's going to be counteracted, so to speak, by a surcharge. So instead of a base on your wastewater, you'll now have a surcharge, much like we do for water. That help?
Yeah, that helps. So, so basically it won't necessarily be completely tied to usage.
No.
It'll be each individual place will, you'll have to, whether you use, whether you flush a toilet, you know, three times a month or, or you use, you know, or you have a, a five-inch water line coming into your place.
Correct.
Your surcharge is going to be the same.
Yep.
And then there, there will be a difference in, in usage charge, but there will be, a large portion will be in, in surcharge and that'll be divided up amongst everyone individually. So it won't necessarily be that, you know, Simples is what we hear quite often because they're a large user of, of water.
So I guess I'm not sure how that works. So on the water side, the surcharge is based on your meter size. So something like that does have a higher surcharge than residential. Now, I assume we would do the same thing on sewer?
That'd be a discussion that the commission needs to have and decide on. I mean, that would certainly be my recommendation. For instance, Simples, Simples right now has two eight-inch lines coming into their house. The, the infrastructure that Kyle's planning on improving and having is going to be a lot more than what 4,000 residents requiring a one-inch line coming into their house are. So, and that has stood up the test of time so far on legal challenges that you can charge more based on the demand that they're going to have. And Simples is certainly based on consumption too. I mean, but again, that would be a discussion that the commission's going to have to have and decide on, on how you spread out that surcharge. I can give you an example of, of the drastic amount that it would, that would occur with the residential if you tried to spread that evenly. When we first did the water, I can remember having a couple of commissioners into my office that were quite concerned about the water surcharge to businesses. And because of having, you know, at that time I had a flow chart out and we'll do the same thing, that lists literally all 5,500 customers. Lessening the surcharge to some businesses by just 10% created a 20-some percent increase spread out over everybody else then. Because it still takes a certain amount of dollars, you know, and, and again, because of the surcharge based on the size of the water meter coming in, just, and, and you can do a spreadsheet like that and online, we can do it and show you just what effect changing the small amount on the, on the, on the base charge for the higher-sized sewer user would affect everybody else in the residential area. So do you understand what I'm trying to say there? It's, it's a little complicated. If I had the spreadsheet, I, I wish I'd had it along, but.
Sure. I, I mean, I, I have somewhat of a grasp of it, just like I have somewhat of a grasp of all of this. Just a little bit of a grasp of it. You're trying to figure it out. But I, mainly I wanted to make the point that, of the surcharge and, and how that was, was going to work. Cause I don't completely understand, understand it. But Kyle, when we spoke, the, my understanding of it from what you had said was is that it's a more, it's because of the loan. It's a more concrete, the, the surcharge is your.
It's a guaranteed number not based on.
It's a guar, it's a guaranteed number where if you have consumption and you have, you know, you're, you're based off of businesses or what have you, and all of a sudden a business goes away, then, then they're not having that consumption. So that your consumption is more of a variable where, where a surcharge is, is, is more concrete?
Of a set number.
Okay.
And again, that's required by the state.
And again, an example, that would be the current wastewater, or current water surcharge. You know, if you don't use a drop of water, you're still going to pay as a, as the average resident, you're still going to pay $27.51 just to be able to have a drop of water. And, and everything above and beyond that is, depends on your consumption. And the consumption right now is, I want to say, again, I don't have a figure written for me. I believe it's like 682 per thousand. So if you don't use anything, you're still going to pay the $27. Depending on what you use, you're going to pay 682 each per thousand dollars more.
Has there been any research done on how these potential rates would compare to other similar sized municipalities in our, in our state? Maybe that's not information that I can find.
I haven't researched it and I always, I'd always caution, you're not comparing apples to apples. What do you look at that? But the reality of it is, we would be one of the highest in the state, absolutely. But again, we do have some things at the facility that we have to address and we have to address them in the next couple of years. So, you know, we are going to have to see some rate increases and we are going to have to do some work at, at the facility or relocation. Some of this we can't get away from. It's just, how far into do you want to go?
Knowing we don't have an alternate location, does your $88 million estimate include any rough estimates of new piping to that location?
Yes, I think we figured five miles, is that right? Five miles of pipe to the facility and then a mile of pipe to the river. And then there is some land acquisition estimates in there. There's some estimates for removal of the structures at the current facility. We get a lift station. What else am I missing? And then of course, the, the facility, the treatment facility itself. So.
The question was, how different would a new facility be?
I'm going to, I'll let Delron answer.
Yeah. So that's a, that's a good question. There are, there are some new technologies out there that would generally apply and give you some economy scale with a new facility. But generally it's an activated, they would be an activated sludge plant, similar to what you have now. With some nuances with new technology, they call it, there's granular sludge and there's different forms of digestion. But very similar in both land, the amount of land it would take and the type of treatment you have. Probably to the average person, it would look the same, but it's, the, there's some new technologies out there that give you some economy, but certainly pretty close to what you have now.
If we did deconstruct the current facility, given what we know about the ground stability, compaction, whatever, would it be usable for any use or would it have limited use? Do we know?
Again, you're going to have floodplain issues at that location. I wouldn't say the soil stability would be an issue that, I mean, you could design around that. But again, I think the bigger issue is, is the pipelines that are there and some of those things. Again, you've got a raw water line coming back from our collector well. You've got three gas mains, major gas mains, one of them being TransCanada, like on the paddle point area. I'm not sure TransCanada would let you even put a baseball field over top of their, their pipeline. So I think major structures would be tough down there. There is some room. Again, I would look at that slide, it's about five acres at the facility. And you're going to have to remove a lot of underground pipe and everything to get to that point, but it's. But again, I think the floodplain would probably be one of the bigger issues.
In both options, did you consider a growth in user base, number of inhabitants, residents, that type of?
Yeah. So when we, when we do the facilities plan, that is one of the requirements for the, for the, you have to do a facility plan as part of the application. And when that facility plan, you look at, I think 25-year estimates on growth. And we also did do a little bit in regionalization, making sure we had capacity for possibly future development with the lake area having a sewer someday. So I would say that the project isn't really driven by capacity. It's really driven by aging infrastructure, aging equipment. But when you're going in there to do that equipment, you look at that 25-year window for capacity. So yes, it has, that will be addressed. It has been.
Kyle, on your deck, you mentioned some milestones and dates that were probably set by politicians. Which dates would you say have the potential for being changed simply because of who and how they were enacted?
I cannot answer that, but I, I will start with, the, the big deadline is the 2026 deadline for ARPA. That comes from the highest level at the federal government. I don't think the state has much control over that. One of the terms you hear is they want shovel. One of the terms you hear is they want shovel-ready projects. It's called the rescue plan because they want these projects out. They want us getting contractors to work, getting people to work. That's part of the goal of this. So I would not bet any money on the 2026 deadline changing. Could I be wrong there? Absolutely. But just based on what we saw with things like ERA funds, what we saw with our EDA grant, they're not usually open to those deadlines being expanded or, or, or longer. But again, we're in different times right now. I, I can't say that I have any, I don't know. But in, in the past, they have not been extended. That's the best I can tell you. What they're going to do this time, I, I don't know.
Could I ask another question? If you wouldn't mind. Is the money you're talking about, the COVID funding, that's the stimulus COVID money? Or is this the infrastructure plan, the one for two trillion just?
This is the, the, the money we're talking about is the American Rescue Plan. The infrastructure plan does not look to have additional grant money. It does have additional money for SRF and a pretty good sum of that. Some of that SRF money that the state gets may be put into what they consider the consolidated package, which is grant money. But based on our rates in the past, we really don't qualify for consolidated money. So again, we're looking at really the ARPA funds is, is what we're looking at.
So we think in the infrastructure plan, there will be any, there is funding for, for solid waste and water treatment? I mean, in the general?
Yeah, but, yeah, but it's, it's broke out to state revolving funds. There is some specialized funds for lead service line replacements and some things like that. And then, like I said, when the state gets their portion or they gets their SRF funding, there is some flexibility for them to roll some of that into their consolidated program that is grant funds. But again, in the past, we have not qualified for consolidated funds. It usually goes to the smaller towns and things like that. So we don't see a lot of grant money in the infrastructure bill. Again, we're seeing SRF funding, which is a loan program. Now, again, that's not finalized yet either.
So conversations are starting up again about sanitary sewer on the west side of town. At one point, didn't we overbuild some of our piping infrastructure to be able to accept wastewater from that side of town if it should develop?
I, I cannot answer that. That is one of the areas where we, we don't have the information. Again, we are in the process of working on getting a collection system, master plan put together that will answer that. I do know we would, what we plan on doing will have capacity at the treatment facility. Again, answering that question is hard to know because I've gotten different. They don't even have a sanitary sewer district yet. So knowing what and how many homes would be on that line, how many businesses, it's, I don't know. But, so I can't answer that 100%, but on the collection system side. But on the treatment side, what we looked at here was we would have additional capacity for a pretty substantial amount of residential if that did happen in the next 20 or 25 years.
Would we get, be overbuilt in 99, 2000?
So that'd be part of the interceptor line that was put in out there, so.
On the redundancy side, I know we always want to try to build in as much redundancy as you can so that, especially in wastewater, because we all know it doesn't ever turn off. The, I'm going to lose my, I, I don't know what it's called. The arm, the kayak arm, all right?
Secondary clarifier.
Secondary clarifier. In the, in this, whether we move it or, or rehabilitate what, what's down there, is there going to be a redundancy for that or is it just going to be fixed?
In that, in that 44 million, we do have redundancy to remove what we call our standby clarifier now that's undersized and replace it with a new secondary clarifier that, so we would have that redundancy. Like I said, that is one of the, the few areas that we have brick and mortar construction is, again, the secondary clarifier, a small addition to the digester building for, for some code issues to get our boilers outside of that building. And then we have an undersized grit chamber, so we'd be doing some, some construction on a new wet wells for our grit chamber. So we do, like I said, there's a little bit of, of brick and mortar, concrete construction and the primary clarifier is one of them. But otherwise, like I said, it's mostly equipment.
All right, so it'll be an area that we're vulnerable right now that will, hopefully, we'll, hopefully we'll be able to, to solidify.
Yeah, I'm tired of hearing Tanner whine about it. But no, that one we are looking at, yep.
So just to make sure I understand this, the, the equipment that you're replacing, we're replacing everything in the scope of this project that will, that could fail that we, that we know of, that's going to, it will last approximately 20 years, correct?
Right, I mean.
And I know nothing's guaranteed, but what I'm saying is that we're not just, we're not fixing what, what's a problem right now and 10 years from now. Now we're, now we're back in, in a, in the same situation.
I would say at 44 million, we're pretty confident we have a, a solid 20-year project. Now, there's always, there's always maintenance, there's always a few things that, you know, we're going to look at that might have a 15-year lifespan that, but they won't be another 44 million. Well, maybe by then it might be 15 years, but no, this is, this is a 20 to 25-year project at 44 million.
With the, the rehab option, will there be times where we would have to have some disruption in service because there don't have redundancy in a system that you need to have while we're working on the rehab?
Customers won't see that, no. That's part of the, I'm not, in a perfect world, we would love to move the facility. That's a way easier project. Again, we're looking at the reality of the cost. If money wasn't an option, yeah, we'd be saying move it for sure. But yeah, because, yeah, you've got to bypass things and you've got to put temporary structures in place to, to, to do some of that treatment. So it's a tough project, there's no doubt.
And when you think about locations where a new facility could go, you know, are we just talking the east side of town? Is it possible to go west? Would that make any sense?
It's possible to go anywhere you want, but it's just going to cost more. Again, everything comes down to that corner of town. So the farther you get away from that corner of town, the farther you're going to have to pump it, the farther you have to pump it, the bigger the pumps have to be, the more energy you're going to spend. So again, we looked at that east side as probably the most logical place to go. Could we go all the way west with it? We can. You're pumping it uphill most of the way to get there. It's a farther distance, it's just going to cost more.
Other questions? I know we're getting close here to winding down to get ready for our actual city commission meeting. So, so I do, that was a lot of information presented tonight to kind of go through. I know Rob and others that sit in the back of the room are going to do a great job putting this in the paper tomorrow and recapping everything. So I, I guess I'm just wanting to make sure, as we take calls and emails about this, that everybody kind of understands what they're talking about. So Kyle, I don't know if there's any way you could kind of just briefly go through kind of the three options that we have, you know, as we're, as we're going up here and, and just kind of some, some, maybe, I don't know if that's the best thing, like next steps or as we're talking to people, what are the big takeaways from tonight that we need to know?
I would say there's two options on the table and that's really the rehabilitation and retrofit and a little bit of capacity gain at our current facility. And again, that's $44 million. Or the relocation to a, a new location, new facility at a new location. And again, you're talking 88 million. I think the biggest takeaway I, that would come out of me is I don't think we're going to get grant funds on the additional cost to relocate. I think we're only going to get grant funds on the 44 million. Again, the, the relocation has some issues with land acquisition and getting some of those timelines put together to hit that 2026. If you can't hit that, there's a good chance you're not getting any ARPA funds. So again, and I know this is really a, a short timeline for you guys, for everybody, for the community, but it's just kind of the way the funding has, has trickled down to us. It's not perfect, but on the other side, you know, I, I think the state's really shooting for a 30% grant, which is again, money that we haven't seen in, in water and wastewater since the 70s. I'm not even sure we saw that much in the 70s. I wasn't around for it, so, but that's, that's kind of where we're at. Does that answer that?
I think it does. And then the next question I have is for Al. So let's say, as Kyle shared, we can only get 30% of the 44 million. So if we decide to move it, we're borrowing a heck of a lot of money, which puts us at our ceiling, correct? And then if that does put us at our ceiling, I worry a little bit about what future projects we don't know about yet. We get another flooding disaster, we get a tornado. We've talked about in strategic planning, a small little bridge that spans a river that connects two states and the maintenance it's going to take for that. Where does that leave us with maybe future projects we know or don't know about if we would borrow almost everything we can?
Again, I, I want to be a little bit cautionary when I talk about it would put us at capacity. It would put us at capacity today. But based on the fact that we're going to be spending the next four to five years building this, we've got four to five years' worth of assessed value growth. We've got four to five years versus of, of debt settlement, so to speak, with our annual debt already being serviced. So it, I'm not telling you that four to five years from now, you'll still be at capacity. It, it's a moving target. It would be just, if you borrowed everything tomorrow, we'd be, we'd be struggling, so to speak, on the debt capacity.
And then Kyle, the other question I had is, and I can't remember if we discussed this or not. So I did ask earlier if we could front-load those funds on the construction project, which you answered most times and in previous projects, they don't let you front-load that and fill in. So what happens, because I, I do agree, 2026 is a little scary to me in, in getting this done and completed. Do we lose those funds? Do we have to play them back? What happens when that facility, if we decide to move it, isn't completed in 2026? What happens to those funds we've received or do we just not get them?
You just, usually you just do not get them. And you have, you still have to finish the project and just, and they would probably loan us the money. We would just have to go for additional loan. So I, I think one of my biggest concerns is, is not, as, as we go into this process of applying for the funds, not having a clear direction and the state not liking our timelines and, and them not being willing to take a portion of this money and give it to us versus another community who does have things ready to go, who is shovel-ready and has made those decisions. So I think my concern would be bigger of, if we're not ready come January 1st, do we put ourselves in a position where maybe somebody else gets the money and we don't? Again, it's the state's job really to make sure this money is out and spent by 2026. So I think their goal is really to get as much of that, whatever share of that 974 million they get out in this first round of funding in January, so it's going out in March. So again, maybe the second round, there's still money available, but I, I wouldn't bet on that. So again, that's just my feeling towards it. No guarantees on anything right now, so.
Can you share with us the communities and projects that you're aware of that are also going to be competing for these one-time funds?
What I can tell you is there's 250, over 250 projects valued at over 3.2 billion. So again, of that 3.2 billion, how many are going to come in January 1st with a project? I, I don't know. Again, every city of every size, every real water district, every sanitary sewer district received the same letter we did and ended up with, again, over 250 projects at over 3.2 billion. So there's, there's a lot of projects out there.
It's not just municipalities, right?
Municipalities, real waters, sanitary sewer districts, yep. So that's a, a lot. How that all plays out and how many of those projects are, are ready to go by January 1st is, again, another, another unknown at this time. So I wish I could give you more definitive answers, but it's just not there right now and, and, but yet there's still those, that timeline for the funding that we have to, to be ready for.
And the rates we're looking at up here are just sewer, has nothing to do with water. It has nothing to do with garbage, solid waste and anything that we may see coming down the pipeline there. This is just sewer.
And this is just the wastewater treatment plot, project. Remember, we have another 7.2 in wastewater on the collection side that we put in. And there's some good projects there. You know, we're going to put 7.2 on our application and, and there's a, in my opinion, we're going to want to stay at that 7.2, that they're, they're good projects. They're projects we're going to be doing in the next five years anyway. And if we're not going to get them completed now with the, the 30% grant, we're going to be paying all of it out of our pocket, so. There, I shouldn't say, there is that 7.2, there is a couple of projects that do open up some future development that we maybe wouldn't do, but again, they're projects that open up some, that land that we would have a really hard time for developers being able to afford to sewer that area. So it, it potentially opens up some, some development in the future. So again, I think that's a good project that, that we want to move forward with. So again, we will have that facilities plan in a, a public hearing on that, too, when we get that facilities plan put together and that'll probably be after the first of the year.
Okay, I do want to give everybody just a few minutes to use the restroom before we sit here a little bit more. Any final questions? City Manager Leon, any parting thoughts on this that you want to bring to the commission?
We're introducing the, you're introducing the first reading of the state, or the public hearing of the state application to be held on the 13th of December for a public hearing. So at that time, it would be nice to have the commission's direction if, if you all are ready to indicate what, what you'd like to see as the preferred scenario on the, on the project. So we'll put this on our website and link it also to our Facebook, this presentation, so that folks can take a look at it. And we'll also have a link to the, to the work session if they want to hear the discussion.
I just want to thank you guys for your time. Thank you.
Okay, so as City Manager Leon said, please have discussions for those in the public with commissioners or bring your thoughts on December 13th as we do a public hearing to discuss the direction we want to give the city manager and Kyle as we move forward in this project. So without an interday, a motion to adjourn the work session.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Oppose, nay, and any abstention. All right, work session concluded. We will begin with the city commission meeting in about four minutes.